I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
All right, welcome to our regular meeting. This Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Any public input on our agenda lineup this evening? If not, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Any public input on our consent agenda lineup this evening? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Um, I guess I have questions.
Okay.
The Highway Department guy, he's not here.
I can answer.
Do you want something pulled from the consent agenda, Commissioner?
I'm just gonna ask some questions on how many, um, how many bids there were that come in on a skid loader for 116,000? And how maybe they go about?
Is that in your share file? Paul, you can answer. I'm just wondering if it's in the share file for everybody's?
Yeah, I believe that there's information in the share file. I'm pulling it up here.
I should say Civic Plus.
Yeah, the Civic, yeah.
Old school share file.
Uh, yeah, it's in the, it's in this. I don't know, and I, you know, we could, we could always call Jared too, but um, I believe they put out an RFP and then they make a decision based on what they receive from there.
Didn't they buy that off somebody else's bid? Low bid.
Yeah, they, they're, um, no, I think they're just getting it from Butler Cat.
They, um, so yeah, you don't know anything about it then?
No, I, uh, what I do know about it is that, um, it was a budgeted item for 2026. They're ordering it now. It will arrive and be paid for in 2026.
The?
The skid loader and the plow truck.
And the two trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah. The trucks are coming from where?
It almost looks like they bought it off a Minnesota bid.
I think they did.
I State, uh, I State Trucks Center.
They bought the trucks out of Minnesota?
Paul, why don't you, uh?
I mean, if you guys want to poll it and ask questions, I'll call Jared.
All right, that's fine.
Why don't you call Terry up so you can be answered these questions whether we're dancing around here?
Can I get a motion to move item six?
To approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion to move item six to our regular business. Is that a motion?
Six and seven. You want to pull those?
All right, you guys, come on. We're on item, we're on six. Is there a motion to move six to regular business?
Okay, what about seven?
Is there a motion to move six to regular business?
I have a motion to move six and seven to regular business.
All right, I've got a motion for six and seven. I've got a second from Putnam. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Then can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So.
Second.
Okay, got a motion first.
Well, that's.
Motion from Schmidt, second from Ehrens. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Somebody be here and I'd ask them.
Ehrens?
Uh, yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yeah, yes.
Putnam? Oh, Putnam?
What's this on?
Consent agenda.
Oh, okay, yep.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Commissioner Schmidt, you're supposed to say James.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you, I know, I got.
You're wrong.
My bad.
All right, first item, we got a public hearing to consider an application for a temporarily on sale liquor license to operate outside the municipality for Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall for events to occur on October 18th and 25th, 2025, located at the Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall, 46620, 278th Street, Lennox, South Dakota, 57039, Track 3A of Popping Ges Edition in the southwest quarter of Section 28, Township 99 North, Range 51 West of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant present? You want to come on in? Just, yeah, go ahead. Alexander McLouth of Lennox, South Dakota. All right. What do you want us to know, if anything?
Hopefully, this is the last time I have to come for a temporary, um, going on to the next public hearing, regular business. You'll see that we're going to be applying one for next year, so.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for our applicant?
Is this the one just a half mile east of Lennox?
Um, yep, right behind Jerry's auto.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You're free to come anytime.
Been there before.
You have?
Yeah, I have.
What are we waiting for?
I don't recall. Something about, yeah, I don't.
All right, anybody have any other questions? All right, any proponent testimony tonight? Any opponent testimony tonight?
I approve.
Is there a motion to approve the application?
If that's your motion, Commissioner, I'll second that.
There we go.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
All right.
Sounds good to me.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Uh, the second came from Commissioner Ehrens. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Then we have a public hearing to consider an application for a retail on sale liquor license on the following described premises to a Prosper Country Warehouse and Event plat of Track 3A of Popping Ges Edition in the southwest quarter of Section 28, Township 99 North, Range 51 West of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Parcel number is 099.51.28.B3A0. Same thing, right?
Um, a little bit different.
Okay.
So, um, this would actually be implemented for 2026, and this would allow us to have a liquor license all year long, instead of having to apply every other month for whichever bride decides to have a liquor license. So unfortunately, I wouldn't see you as much.
Well, you won't, you don't have to put as many miles on this, for sure. All right, do we have any, does anybody have any other questions for our applicant? Okay, um, any proponent testimony tonight? Any opponent testimony tonight? All right, if not, then I'll close testimony and ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve.
Second, Otten.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
I just want to say, you know, for the public that's out there, or anybody that may be paying attention, the reason we're able to do this now is because of the change that came about from us reforming our open sale and ordinances here a month or two ago, so I'm glad we're able to do that, and I'm glad the businesses are able to responsibly take advantage of this.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. All right, I've got a motion and a second. If there is no further discussion, Alicia, you can call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, changing the zone of the property described as Track 2 Spelman's Edition, East Half, Northeast Quarter, Section 5 Township 99 North, Range 50 West, from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Planning Commission recommends approval for zero. Good evening, Toby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Toby Brown representing County Planning and Zoning Department. As was noted, this application before you is an application to change the zoning of the property. Uh, this site is located at the intersection, the southwest intersection of 273rd Street and 472nd Avenue. This is approximately half a mile south of the Harrisburg corporate limits. Uh, this is the current conference plan feature land use map. As you can see, this area is within the planned growth area, as well as the applicant and I worked with staff from the city of Harrisburg, as well as we went through the planning commission and the board, and the city council of Harrisburg to amend their conference of plan to identify this site as appropriate for this type of an application. So it is in conformance with the Lincoln County Conference of Plan and the underlying conference plan, which would be the city of Harrisburg's Conference of Plan. Subject property is 24.76 acres in size. There is a neighborhood utility facility to the north, to the northwest portion of the property, but the property is undeveloped and utilized for agricultural uses at this time. You can see that neighborhood utility facility on the northwest corner there. These are some shots of taking of the property. The one looking to the west would be directly looking onto the property. Uh, so the applicant did submit an application to change the zoning to a planned development district. As there were, planned development district is not a conventional rezone. Planned development district is, is a more defined rezone of the property with specific land uses identified. Uh, so with that application, the applicant did submit an initial, what I'll call initial and a final development plan with the application, identified that they would propose to construct an office building that would have outsides spacing for trailer sales. So the intent of this application is to relocate Prairie Wind Trailers, which is currently located within the city of Harrisburg, landlocked, and it's within the city of Harrisburg, so they're proposing to move it to this location. And so with that, staff, as I mentioned, did meet with city of Harrisburg, and the city of Harrisburg did concur with this application, as well as the planned development district that staff and the applicant drafted, as well as staff and the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting on the site. There was really, there was good attendance at that neighborhood meeting. Out of that neighborhood meeting, there was really no, really items that staff or the applicant had to work on, associated with it. There was general support of what the applicant was proposing at that time. Um, and so with that application, as was mentioned, the planning commission did recommend approval of the land use or the zoning change. With that comes along the identification of the ordinance before you, which is specifically a planned development district, which identifies the uses that would be allowed on that property and the regulations that would generally be applicable to it. Uh, so as you can see, A, B, C, and D would be the uses that would be allowed. Any additional uses or any changes of those uses would have to go through an amendment process, which would be the same process that they've gone through at this, at this point in time. Uh, with that, as well as it did post an applicant's letter, the applicant is unable to come to the meeting tonight. He's out of the country, but he did submit an applicant letter for your review. That just kind of gives a little more background essentially of what the application is, as well as I believe landowner rep is here this evening to testify if you have any questions on that portion of it as well, too. Uh, so with that, um, we did post the property for this public hearing, and as of this meeting, staff has received no comments. At the planning commission public hearing, there was no public comment received with the application. Uh, and with that, uh, the planning commission, as mentioned, does recommend approval of this change of zone to the Prairie Wind Trailers Plan Development District. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair, and answer your questions that the board has at this time.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for Toby?
Um, does he plan on using the whole 24 acres? Or is that just going to be replotted as a commercial, as a?
I don't know. Great question. Appreciate the question. Uh, so what the applicant's proposing to do at this time would just be to utilize a portion of that property, um, and any additional uses or any use of that property would have to go through the amendment process.
Well, he's doing a good job, and he's expanding. I'm glad to see that good business.
Any other questions for Toby from the commission?
Thank you.
All right, is the applicant or the representative here going to give testimony?
Yep.
It's your, it's up to you.
I'm Gary Har. I'm the manager of McNeil Properties LLC that owns the property. Uh, everything seems to be going along fine, so I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
Sometimes that's best. All right, uh, any proponents of the project? Any opponents? All right, if neither, I'm going to close testimony. Any discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Yeah, I second it.
All right, so no discussion. I've got a motion from Commissioner Ehrens and a second from Putnam.
And Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I really like the idea, the fact now that we've moved, um, to allow for planned developments to occur as part of our planning and zoning process. This is now the second one, I think, we've seen. Um, the first one was a couple weeks ago over by Lake Alvin, and now we're seeing this one. And for those of you who don't know, who are not planning and zoning geeks or nerds like myself, when you do a planned development now, what it basically allows is typically the county would do the rezone, or would do the rezone of the property, and then the city that you're closest to, in this instance, Harrisburg, would do the, um, like subdivision authority, right? Do I have that right, Toby? Well, now that we're doing planned developments, we get to take control and charge of the process from start to finish. And so that way, you've got, uh, I think, a streamlined process, but you've also got political accountability now for these planning and zoning decisions with the county commission. So I'm really pleased that we're able to do this, and this one looks like it's all in order. So I'll be supporting it, and I'm glad that Prairie Wind is able to expand their business. I drive past them every day, and I can see they're busting at the seams. So I'm glad they're able to move to a new place now. Thank you.
All right, uh, any other discussion before your questions called?
Maybe they'll get their windmills straightened out.
All right, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
There we go.
All right, got a first reading for an ordinance amending Section 1, Ordinance 0904-06 Airport Board Organization. That's it? Short and sweet. Okay. Next item on our agenda is to approve the date and time for the first reading to occur October 14th, 2025, and the joint second reading and public hearing with the Sioux Falls City Council to occur October 28th, 2025, at Carnegie Town Hall, 235 West 10th Street, Sioux Falls, at 7:00 PM, for an ordinance amending Chapter 155, Joint Zoning Regulations for Lincoln County and the City of Sioux Falls, Section 155.010, Boundaries of Joint and Plating Jurisdiction of the Co-Ordinances of Lincoln County, South Dakota. All right, so that's just our first readings. We're going to won't take any comment or discussion on that. Then we will circle back to actually go on that item five with our scheduling. Since we're going to be in Sioux Falls, we won't be having that night meeting. Can the other commissioners be here that morning, like what would have been our regular commission meeting on the 28th? I'm scheduled to be in trial.
Sorry, real quickly, just to clear this up, Paul Anderson, Commissioner Assistant, this, um, business, this item is to approve the date and time for the first reading to occur and the, and the second reading and public hearing to occur. Um, so first, we need to, or, and two things are looking to happen here. We need to approve the date and time for the first reading and the second, uh, reading and public hearing in Sioux Falls.
We do the motion. Gotcha.
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll need to do, we'll need to set that date and time for that joint meeting. And within, and then with that, that leads us into our second point, that that conflicts with our regularly scheduled evening meeting, as we discussed, I believe, last month when we, um, took up, uh, whenever it was that we took up the item for evening meetings again. So with this normally scheduled meeting, this is a set meeting, what that would, uh, in, what we need to do is we need to reschedule our regularly scheduled meeting for October 28th.
Yep, I misread it, so.
So, I just wanted to clear it up.
Can I get, um, well, first, any public input on just the date and time for the first reading? If not, um, I just need a motion to approve the date and time for the first reading to happen on October 14th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Um, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Are we going to reschedule a night meeting before or after?
We'll get, we'll get.
It'll be after. Okay, yes.
Landine?
Yes. I'm going to need a motion. I guess it looks like I need a motion for the joint second reading and public hearing to occur on October 28th at the Carnegie Hall address.
Uh, so, Madam Chair, a question?
Yep.
Since we will not be having a night meeting that month, my question is, will, you know, how we normally do all of these public hearings at that last meeting of the month? Are we going to, when will all those hearings be conducted?
That's up to you, that's up to you as a board. You can, um, basically what, where the goal is here is to find a time for that third meeting of the month where we do our, where we do the other public hearings. So then it's up to the board as to when you guys would, uh, think makes the most sense to hold our regularly scheduled third meeting. Up to, you could do it, um, that morning of the 28th, or you could do it a different day that works for everyone.
Maybe I have a bit more of a pointed question. Or let me ask it like this. Do we ha, we don't currently have any meetings scheduled for that October 2, any hearings?
Yeah.
Do we?
Not, not yet.
There will be.
Well, we have the Sioux Falls City Council.
Yeah.
So we're being Sioux Falls.
There is a possibility we could have other public hearings scheduled for that third meeting, whenever we, we hold it, but.
And I'll stop playing hide the ball. What I'm trying to figure out is, could we wrote, could we push them all to the November 9th meeting?
Those folks probably don't want to wait that long, is it?
You could do, you could.
Do we even have?
It's up, it's up to the board. You could do it, you can move that other meeting to a different night that works for you guys.
Well, I guess my question is, do we even know if there's any hearings to be had?
We haven't set them yet, but the assumption is that there will be hearings that need to be had.
I, I mean, my goal would be to continue to have the hearings at nighttime. So I guess either I would just flip them over to the November hearing.
Would the, we could do that, or we could do the, just have it on the third meeting and move them up on the 21st? Would they, well, no, that wouldn't give us enough publication time, though, would it?
If we went with the 21st?
Uh, depending on the hearing, you need 10 days to publish, and then we'd approve them on the 7th, they'd get published on the 10th. So I think that would be 11 days. I might defer to Joe on some of the, on if there are differing, uh, public hearing notice, uh, publication requirements, but I believe for most of them, it is 10, it's 10 days.
Well, that would be.
If they, if they were approved on the 7th and published on, I think that's then the, the 9th or the 10th.
There's 10 days in there.
That would be 10 days then.
I would, I would like to see us move our, move that evening meeting to the 21st.
That works for me.
Yeah, that works for me, too.
Does that work for you, Commissioner Ehrens?
Let me look here. Yes.
So that's why I was trying to, trying to get at Paul.
Yes, yeah, of course.
So let's do our next public hearings on the 21st, as long as the days work.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, you'll have to bring that to our attention.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll bring any concerns to our attention, um.
And do, and just keep the night meeting on that one, and then we wouldn't have a meeting on the 28th, other than the meeting in.
So, but yes, to, I think.
City Council.
I think what I'm hearing from you guys, and then you guys will need to make your motion and approve it, is that you would prefer to move our regularly scheduled meeting for the 28th to 6:30 PM on the October 21st, Tuesday, October 21st, in what would normally be our off week. And then on the 28th, we will only have our meeting with, a joint meeting with the city of Sioux Falls in Sioux Falls at Carnegie Hall.
Correct.
Yep. So I just, I just need a motion, if I don't already have one, for that, um, second reading and public hearing to happen in Sioux Falls on the 28th at Carnegie.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second, Otten.
All right, I've got a motion and a second on that one. So then, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. That motion carries.
And then do we have public input on moving that night meeting to the 21st?
We don't. We're just, that's when we're going to have it.
Okay.
I mean, we'll talk about that next meeting?
We can, but.
Or do it now?
You have to do it now, pretty much.
Yeah, I'd do it now.
Do you want to just do a motion that night?
Yeah, I'm over.
To put our regularly scheduled October 28th night meetings at, to October 21st at 6:30?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second.
Good job.
Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Okay. Paul, you got all the meetings straight now? All right, thanks. Next, we have a, 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 wait, we got to circle back.
We got the boss here, anyway.
Yeah, we got to circle back. Um, we had six on the, on the consent. It's now on our regular. Um, Jared, thanks for coming in this evening.
My, my pleasure. My pleasure.
Do I hear a hint of sarcasm?
Say a little smile.
No, you don't know me well enough. No sarcasm. Um, so these items that are on the agenda for purchase are on the 2026 budget.
Let's talk about six first. The $116,000 skid loader.
Okay.
Let's talk about that one first.
Um, so this skid loader is being acquired using Sourcewell Contracting, which is a public, uh, public procurement, um, contract that's used on many different governments. Um, they do the RFPs, addendums, all that stuff for you. Do all the publications, everything. It's a way to streamline the process of buying equipment.
This be like, for instance, any state municipality then could buy this at this?
Correct.
Cost.
Correct.
And somebody's already negotiated the price. Okay.
Correct.
Good to know that.
Was this a budgeted item, Jared?
Came in under budget, too. Hence, one of the reasons why I'm doing this so early for '26, uh, we're getting ahead of some, uh, cost increases.
So this will be payable next year?
Yes, payable next year.
Gotcha. Anybody have any other questions for Jared?
We got one on the number seven.
Jared, I want to, I want to thank you for dropping that gravel off across the street here.
Anything to make myself look better.
For that parking lot.
Yeah.
A lot of folks I know are appreciative of that.
Yeah.
And I know that's no $100,000 skid loader that John is using over there right now to blade that.
Right.
That's like a $2,500 skid loader.
Hey, we used to own it, I know. I know what it is.
When I saw 116,000 on a skid loader, I thought we were buying a house. I wasn't sure.
I, I will tell you, too, that I'm sure John would love to sit and talk to you all about getting our old one. I'm sure he would.
Are you keeping it, or are you going to surplus it?
Nope, I've got two already. Uh, so we're going to go to surplus on this one. Back when I came up for the, uh, when we were doing the budget talks, this skid loader's been with us since '14, and it's been through every single flood. She's, she's seen better days. Uh, would it make John a good skid loader? Sure. Uh, he doesn't do what we do. So.
Okay.
All right.
Do you fit in that skid loader?
Do I?
Yeah.
Is that a, is that a fat joke? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure what it looks like. I am 6'3", but I'm, uh, I'll call myself 275.
Well, I couldn't fit in it.
Yeah, no, they, they actually, they've gotten a lot better.
Really?
Yeah, the cab's got more room in it.
Yeah, that's pretty small. I mean, well, this one out here.
Oh, that one?
Small, yeah. That was the one I was getting at.
Yeah.
For 116,000, you better be able to fit in it.
Well, you'd hope so.
Does anybody have any other questions for Jared? Okay. Uh, any public input on this agenda item? If not, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Otten.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.[1776.54]
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landin?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to approve and authorize the Highway Department to purchase two new tandem axle cab and chassis trucks in the amount of $274,671.
I wish I set the pricing on this stuff, I really did. Uh, Monday it will be. That's, is that an early birthday for me?
I don't know.
No, so, so these trucks, these are purchased in the same scenario, just not using Sourcewell Contracting, we're using state contract, MINDOT. Same thing, they go through the process of setting, MINDOT's a little different in how Sourcewell works. MINDOT, if you go onto the website, you can open up the contracts, pull it out, it has all the pricings for everything. Basically, to assemble a truck like this, there's 300 and some lines, you're building your own truck. We have our own spec that I put together years ago for what we buy for trucks, so it's basically go through, this is what it is, and it basically spits out what the price of the truck is for you. And how they do their contracting is, it's open and viewable to the world. Whoever it is, whether it's a Western Star, or Peterbilt, Kenworth, whoever it is, their pricing is available. It's all, all can be seen by all eyes.
And Jared, these are gonna be used for plow and snow and other act.
Uh, Four Seasons trucks. Yep, Four Seasons.
All right, any other questions for Jared?
Are you surplusing what?
Yep, I got two trucks to surplus. Yep.
Are you taking the boxes and hoists off the other two trucks, putting on here?
No, boxes are shot. We're changing how we do that, we, we run stainless steel boxes now to get life out of them and possibly do what you're talking about. But the, by the steel boxes we have now, they don't make it.
Yeah, we changed that, what, is that a year or two ago?
Um, this would be my third set of trucks, so probably four years ago.
Okay.
Yep.
So you'll be, you'll be coming next year to get boxes, then?
Correct, and all the snow equipment, yep.
Box and equipment.
Yep. That's like buying a house, too. Worse than this skid loader. No, nothing.
Other questions for Jared? All right.
I have a comment, but we'll wait till after we vote.
Any public input on this agenda item? Okay.
Move for approval.
Got a motion from Schmidt, second from Aaron's. If there's no further discussion, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I wanted, I wanted to, no, not about that, I wanted to comment about his response to a request, so, well, let's vote first.
All right, we'll vote first, then. Alicia, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landin?
Yes, motion carries.
Jared, on the corner of 106 and Western Avenue, you know, I got that big hole? And you guys have filled that how many times?
A while.
Yeah. And you tell people, let's just take a wider turn, but I want to compliment you, I did call and you got it filled up right away, so.
We're looking at different ways to make it stay. We got ways. And it won't be any tired, tired pokers either, we got it, we figured it out.
Okay, but anyway, thank you for responding as quick as you did.
All right, next is our opportunity for public comment, for items not on the agenda. Anyone wanting to come up and add services policies of Lincoln County, now would be the time to do so. Thanks for coming in this evening, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there, if there are none, then we'll move to.
We've got public comment here, we got.
I didn't really plan on speaking, but Amy Harms, Sioux Falls, just want to thank you guys for another night meeting. And I would just like it noted for the record that there is a big vote that happened today in Pierre. So a lot of the people who would typically be here are in Pierre, so just wanted that noted for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, is this time for public comment?
It sure is.
Yes, it is.
Good evening, my name is Jack Marsh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you as, as the Board Chairman of the South Dakota Children's Home Society. Children's Home, the state's oldest and most comprehensive child and family welfare nonprofit, serves the vulnerable individuals across South Dakota. Our mission is to prevent, treat, and heal trauma. In many cases, horrific trauma, unimaginable trauma. Children's Home is a large, multifaceted organization operating 24/7. With an annual budget of $37 million and nearly 400 employees, we are fortunate to have an exceptional team of dedicated professionals, from frontline staff to the CEO. We compensate them fairly and competitively because they perform extraordinarily difficult work under intense pressure with skill, compassion, empathy, and excellence every single day. We serve all 66 counties, operate in four facilities, and we are constructing a new campus in Rapid City scheduled for completion in late 2026. The Board and staff of Children's Home are grateful that Lincoln County recently renewed its support and that a majority of the commission approved a $15,000 allocation for one of our most vital and enduring programs, the Shelter for Family Safety. Because your commission is divided, I want to brief you about our work and assure you that Children's Home Society is a responsible steward of public support. Commissioner Joel Aaron's opposed the allocation, stating that nonprofits are not deserving of taxpayer funding. He singled out Children's Home, referenced our CEO's salary, and implied, and implied that Children's Home is Exhibit A. He also said, quote, "This is another reason why we have a property tax crisis in this county and state." As Chairman of the Governing Board and trusting, entrusted with ensuring that Children's Home operates with integrity, please allow me a few moments to offer clarity about our umbrella organization and its affiliate, the Shelter for Family Safety. The Shelter, formerly known as Children's Inn, is one of roughly 12 programs administered by Children's Home, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Other programs include two residential treatment centers and three schools for children ages 4 to 14, outpatient mental health services, advocacy for children affected by sexual and physical abuse, therapeutic foster care, adoptions, and a home nurse visitation program for first-time mothers and their babies. The Shelter is the largest facility of its kind in South Dakota. To meet growing demand, we doubled capacity with a new 108-bed building that opened in 2022. With a $5.5 million annual budget and 50 FTEs, the Shelter provided nearly 29,000 days of residential care last year to victims of domestic violence. Children, women, and men. All are welcome, anytime, day or night, free of charge, free of judgment. Survivors often arrive with nothing but the clothes they are wearing. Still skeptical? Ask your sheriff or other Lincoln County law enforcement officials where they turn for emergency help with domestic assault victims. The Shelter offers dignity, safe housing, meals, clothing, personal care, transportation, case management, advocacy, and counseling. The average stay is 20 days. Who are these individuals? Last year, 251 of them were Lincoln County residents. Your neighbors, your constituents, possibly even your friends or relatives. At an average cost of $2,000 per stay, Children's Home spent a half million dollars caring for those 251 Lincoln County residents last year. We did so without hesitation because we save lives, restore hope, and help families regain stability. The $15,000 allocation covers the cost of about four of those 251 residents. Sustained funding for the Shelter for Family Safety is the greatest single financial challenge of the Children's Home Society. Philanthropy now covers a staggering 75% of its budget. So Commissioner Aaron's, I will give you the benefit of the doubt. Perhaps you were misinformed or simply unaware of the profound impact that Children's Home has on Lincoln County families. Now that you do know, I hope that you will reconsider. Local government, including Lincoln County, has a clear responsibility to support public safety and nonprofits such as ours. If you'd like to tour our facilities, explore our operations, review our finances, or meet with our leadership, I would be happy to arrange it. We are transparent, accountable, and proud of the essential work we are honored to do. So Commissioner Aaron's, I hope that you will become an advocate for the vulnerable children and families of Lincoln County who urgently need the services provided by the Shelter for Family Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up for a public comment? All right, if not, Joe, did we need executive session for anything? I'm gonna circle back, though, we've got a Commissioner report.
I've got a question, I guess I was gonna ask Joel.
You can ask him later.
Okay.
Are you ready? Paul, are you gonna come up and give a Commissioner report?
I'm good. Hello again, Paul Anderson, Lincoln County Commission Assistant. As part of Commissioner Landin's raw commission report, she asked me to talk about the Comprehensive Property Tax Task Force that took place yesterday in Pierre at the state Capitol. So I just, I was able to attend and take some notes, and so I'll give you, guys, the Board a briefing of what occurred. So the meeting started with a presentation from Department of Revenue Secretary, Secretary Howdy Shaw. He gave a detailed breakdown of the existing property tax relief programs. The elderly freeze, which was updated in 216, to $55,000 for an individual and $65,000 for a multi-member family, and then a $500,000 limit on the home value for the elderly freeze. The disabled and paraplegic veterans exemptions, which we've started reaching out to existing qualified veterans to let them know that they do qualify for this program and encouraging them to apply. The home sale exemption, the home sale exemption and the homestead program, which allows those 70 and older with home values less than $170,000 are exempt from tax deed sales. The, he also went, Secretary Howdy Shaw also went over the state sales and property tax refund program, all of which can be found on the Department of Revenue's website for the property tax relief program. If you click on this property tax relief programs, there is a big, a good breakdown fact sheet for all the relief and property tax exemptions available to citizens of South Dakota. Secretary Howdy Shaw then gave a presentation on tax increment finance districts in South Dakota. He detailed the various classifications for the TIF districts, local industrial economic development and affordable housing. And here, again, you can see the State Department of Revenue's breakdown on TIFs. You can see an annual report on every active TIF in the state, guidelines for TIFs, a fact sheet detailing TIFs, and forms to establish, begin the process for establishing a TIF. The committee then moved on to an economics discussion and Q and A with Dr. Joseph Santos, the Director of the SDSU NEST School of Management Economics. The committee was able to discuss with Dr. Santos kind of the economic impact of property taxes, the classification. It is, it is basically an economics lecture. I highly recommend anyone to go back and watch the minutes from Dr. Santos's discussion with the committee. It was very informative as to all the different challenges that we face when you look at property taxes. Senator Jim Melhoff presented his proposal to decouple education funding, the general education fund and the special education fund, from local property taxes. His proposal would come from establishing, increasing the existing state sales tax to eliminate the local property tax burden for funding schools. It's similar to, now Lieutenant Governor Van Heisen had a similar proposal during last legislative session that did not pass. This is a similar proposal, but I think has a few different tweaks as before, and this is presented to the full committee. We heard public testimony, including a potential initiated measure to replace property taxes with a flat sales tax. And then there was other public testimony discussing TIFs, valuations, other replacements the committee heard from the public. After that, the committee broke into its subcommittee, subcommittee discussions. I attended the local government one, as that pertains to us. Representative Jamison, during the last meeting, had indicated he would come up with some proposals. He came up with things like a way to enact statewide, Sioux Falls has a program that automatically rebates your municipal taxes if you qualify for the elderly freeze. So the city of Sioux Falls works with Minnehaha and Lincoln County Treasurers to identify all those who are active participants in the elderly freeze, and then they automatically rebate their city portion of their taxes. So Representative Jamison discussed creating a way to make that statewide. The, the indication was, and I don't know where, where that landed, the indication was that because Sioux Falls has a home rule charter, they are able to do that, but that option might not be available to some of the other municipalities. So that's one of the proposals that Representative Jamison came up with. A big discussion point was increasing transparency into, for the public as to how property taxes are, how the middle levy is set, where your money goes, finding easier, making it easier for people on their tax bill to access, access your local government's budgets, your schools, your city, your county's budgets, and where that's going, and then providing, giving people an easy way, a QR code or a website link, so that they can be better informed when that tax bill comes, so they can learn, and it's not just a bunch of random information staring them in the face. He discussed ways to address specific limitations within the tax code that would allow for relief for owner occupied while eliminating some loopholes for people that operate their owner occupied as a business, whether they rent it or use it as an Airbnb, finding ways to eliminate some of the loopholes to allow relief for actual homeowners. And they also discussed TIFs again. There was discussion on North Dakota has a program where a third-party reviews TIFs for the BUTF4. So there's just been a lot of discussion on TIFs within this property taxing, so I expect some of the proposals that are brought before the committee to deal with TIFs. Schools, again, is, they're, all the committees, the schools and state funding committees, again, are reported, looking at ways to address valuation and removing some of the burden. The, the one that is the biggest, and I don't have all, I don't have a detailed breakdown yet, but you can find on the Legislative Resources, the LRC website for the agenda, the state funding subcommittee listed eight proposals that they believe will reduce property taxes in, in South Dakota. The proposals range from reducing owner occupied property taxes by 48% down to 25%. So I will be doing research on those eight proposals, consulting with experts, and I anticipate having a report for you guys on those eight proposals sometime in the future. But if you are interested, in the meantime, those proposals are on the LRC website detailing, which are probably today, for the committee, the most detailed options for reducing property taxes in South Dakota. The committee, the committee chair, Senator Carr, directed the members of the committee to have proposed bills in draft form to LRC by the 10th, with a drop dead date of October 14th, to be placed on the LRC website for review, and then they'll take them up during the October 22nd committee meeting, where they'll make their recommendations to go to the full legislature for the January session. So there's a lot of information, a lot of stuff is discussed. It's a, it's a big, it's a big ask, they're being, a big task they're being asked to take on. And that was a lot of information, they discussed a lot. If you have any further questions, feel free to reach out, and I'll be happy to find any other answers that you guys need. Unless you guys have any questions for me?
Madam Chair, just, you know, one of the other things that, I had the opportunity to listen to it, I was in the car all day yesterday, Paul. So I had some windshield time in front of me. But one of the other things that the committee talked about, well, they talked about two things. Number one, the burden that the property taxpayers are facing, and wants versus needs that counties have to pay for versus discretionary spending. But what they also talked about is that they want to look into the possibility of being able to apply over the internet instead of all these paper applications. And I thought that was an interesting part of the discussion.
Yes, I, and I, yeah, I actually had that written down, and I went over it, and yes, that was one of the things that, the, the, one jumping off part was, and let me see if I can find it here. The state has the sales and property tax rebate. The state has the sales and property tax rebate program that is available to certain citizens who meet income requirements. They're very, very well, so not very many people qualify. That's something that they're talking about working on, and you're able to apply online. If you qualify, you can receive either sales tax rebate or property tax rebate, whichever's higher, the department will review it, and you can apply online. The discussion, as you said, Commissioner, is finding ways to take that and expand applying for these programs online.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner reports, any commissioners have reports this evening?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe when Amy Harms came up earlier, I think she was referring to the prison vote today, and it's gone through, the Senate approved it, it's SB2, and it had to, both the House, the Senate and the House had to have a two-thirds majority, and it passed the Senate with its two-thirds, 24 to 11, and we're awaiting on the House vote. Chad, do you have some update?
He do have an update? You want to come up and tell us about it?
Chad Scowes-Canton passed the House 5118, unexcused.
All right. Thank you. How long ago did that happen? Not very. Okay.
Thank you, Chad.
Anything else, Betty?
No, thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioner reports tonight?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you and good evening. So I had the opportunity to attend the POW MIA event that was put on by the local veterans organizations here, and that was this last Friday night. There were about 250 people there. Our veteran service officer was also there, so I was glad to see that Lincoln County was well represented, had a bunch of Boy Scouts, other family members of, and then actually what happened at the POW MIA event is that we were able to recognize the fact that one Air Force Colonel was found through some different retrieval-type activities conducted by the Defense Department, or now Department of War, and as a result of being able to identify his remains, they were able to now remove his flag. So now, instead of seven MIA veterans, there are now six remaining that still need to be identified. So very moving ceremony, and I was glad that I could attend, and it was very good attendance for Friday night. So that's good to hear. And then also, I wanted to report that I was able to attend several of the Charlie Kirk vigils that occurred over the last week and a half or so. Very moving, very dramatic. They were, they were very well put on by the groups that put them on, saw a lot of familiar faces, but also saw a lot of people I didn't recognize. And it was just very moving to see people from around the community coming together to celebrate somebody who had committed himself to, to his faith, as well as to the First Amendment. So I'm very proud, very humbled to be able to sit there next to my fellow citizens and to celebrate Charlie Kirk's life. So I really appreciate that. And then if I could just take a moment of personal privilege here, actually, I didn't single out. Mr. Marsh, I want to thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. I listened to them, appreciate the work that you do on behalf of your organization, appreciate the work that the organization does. All done very well for the citizens of Lincoln County. Just to correct the record though, I singled out Lifescap's CEO, who makes $300,000 a year, not the CEO of Children's Home Society. And then also, even though all of these organizations do wonderful work, I still think that property tax owners should decide charitable giving for themselves, not the government.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioner reports, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Last week, Commissioner Landy and myself toured the new juvenile detention center in Sioux Falls, which is been, you know, badly needed. The old one is pretty well dilapidated and, and has seen its better days, but a great facility. They certainly have prepared for youth, you know, anywhere from, what, 12 to 18? When you turn 18, and we did find out that when you turn 18 and you still are incarcerated for your, for your crime, you are sent to the penitentiary. And they've got tremendous facilities, from padded cells to different arrangements for different degrees of, of youth that have committed crimes that are minor or, but they wouldn't be there. But what it is, I just wanted to share this with you, the daily cost for one juvenile is $540, and that's, that's just the daily cost. The average stay for a juvenile in that detention center is seven days, and if you start adding that up, it comes, you know, $3,500 disappears in a week. And if they stay longer, some of them have been there for a month or more. So young people are very costly, so consequently, if, I'm going to say it again, if we're able to influence young families to prevent them from straying off the path, that we don't have to pay because on some of these people, we're going to be paying for them at adolescence, and when they get out of there, their chances of going straight are really diminished, and then we start paying for them on other ends. And by the way, that daily cost does not include all of the litigation that is necessary from the processing, going through court trials and attorneys and everything else that goes into that. So taking care of kids is a, is an expensive thing. So my money always goes to try to be prevention because I think that's where the future is, and I think that's the best place for our money. Anyway, I have no other comment. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Patton, any report you'd like to make?
No, I just wanted Joel, I guess, to correct that. I think it was 375,000, wasn't it, as opposed to 300?
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
Yeah, which is quite a chunk of change for a nonprofit to be having to pay out.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Can we, do we, can we publicly announce what Sheriff Swenson told us about bed rates?
Yeah, we can do that. Do you have the numbers? That was, I was, I was going to mention that it went up 15%, but you have the actual numbers? Go ahead.
Sheriff Swenson let us know that the jail daily bed rate is increasing from $112 a day to $131.90 or a 51.1% increase. We have, as the county commission, we have no control over that, and this is Minnehaha County.
Thanks, Commissioner. Just since our last meeting, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Putnam, and myself attended our Southeast District meeting that was held in Lincoln. That's an eight-county meeting where all the county officials get together and discuss different aspects of county government and what the different counties are doing and coming up with solutions to different topics. Then on September 17th, I'm on the Juvenile Justice Collaborative Board or Group, whatever you want to call it, but we had our meeting on September 17th, and that included different stakeholders from the Second Circuit, and it focuses on juvenile diversion resources such as Lutheran Social Services and other third-party agencies that we do support as a county and provide funds for, to supplement their budgets in helping the courts and juvenile services try and decrease recidivism and, within the juvenile context, and to keep those kids and try and get them on the right path going forward. So I concur with what Commissioner Schmidt has said this evening, that, you know, so an ounce of prevention can go a long way when you get to these kids early. And so I think those third-party agencies that we are providing some funding to are well worth it, and certainly a lot of those same third parties receive government funding through federal grants and what have you. So one way or another, the public's going to pay for it, whether on the front end or on the back end when they potentially end up in our prison system or homeless on the streets. I did, yep, we did tour the Juvenile Justice Center, so that's being done in two parts. That was that same day on the 17th, and they, we were told they're going to start knocking down the other part of that building and hope to have it down by the beginning of November. And so then they'll continue the construction in the second phase of that. I was able to have lunch with Commissioner Heisey last week. That we, that was a great meeting. Talked about a lot of the same problems that Minnehaha County and Lincoln County have together. And then this past Friday, I met with Travis Dresson, the South Dakota DOT regarding the traffic impact study that we did for the new justice center, and we didn't have very accurate, like, traffic counts when we originally did that, so we're looking at updating that with some more accurate traffic counts to see what's really needed at that intersection for turn lanes and such. So that's it.
Madam Chair, I neglected something.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have served ICAP, which is Interlakes Community Action Program, which is out of Madison, and there are four CAP agencies, and we have one that's from, out of Wagner called Rock. And anyway, Madison is very good about presenting all of the data that they do for meals on meals and for all of the various social programs that they provide for kids, and learning, and they have bridges for trying to build people from standing, understanding, better use of their finances, better budgeting. But there was one particular one where the state had a 33% reduction in the support for a nutrition program, and I want to give a shout out to Senator Ernie Otten, who took that upon himself and helped, along with Casey Crabtree, was able to rescind that particular program and save it and put it back on solid ground. So a shout out to those two senators for a very saving group program. And I'd like to, I'm going to make this a public one, I'd like to see our CAP agency come before us one time and make a presentation on what they do for our residents of Lincoln County. I know ICAP does a few things. They do some weatherization and things, only because they live, we share Sioux Falls. But as far as getting information on what Rock is providing for the rest of our residents is kind of missing, so I hope that they watch this because I'm going to be asking or send a letter to them requesting that they come up and they give us a report on what they do for our residents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any last minute comments from the commission? All right. No executive session, Joe, you said?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thanks. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks. I got a motion and a second. Alicia, we call the roll.
Commissioner, Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.